You get it?
Oh, you get it, go!
Hey, look, you gotta go run it for them, because they owe us your talk. A little kid talk.
Diana, what do you have to say?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was really... All right, we call this order, meeting to order. Tonight we'll begin with our pledge by commission of your...
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
We'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Here.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Here.
Commissioner Rube?
Here.
Commissioner Robertson? Commissioner Speaker?
Here.
Commissioner Terry?
Okay, no minutes? We have for August 4th, no minutes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, we'll have those next time.
Yep.
And then, no courtesies, no proclamations. So we'll begin our board and commission reports with Commissioner Hewitt.
Actually, the airport board manager was ill. And I don't know, I thought he would... He thought he was getting better, but I haven't been able to contact him, and I hate to call him so long. And his wife took his phone away. So I can't...
The nerd.
And then, I was gonna ask you tonight, too, what the status was. Did they find property at the airport?
Oh, we have no idea.
Oh, okay.
For the meeting...
Safe?
Yes.
I heard that they have presented some really good options, but that's the one side.
Yeah, and that's all that we have done. We had some options.
Commissioner Rube?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Hewitt?
The library board met Wednesday, August 13th. It was another great meeting, hot August meeting, everybody loved those. There's a lot going on at the library. The story walk has been very much appreciated this summer. Again, that's something that with Parks and Rec, the library is very excited to get to do. The summer reading program has concluded, and again, that would've been a great year. This next year, they're gonna do a lot of work with local history and gathering skills to make sure that the local history collection at the library is secured and preserved and archived and accessible. So they're gonna do some training, they're also gonna do other information. And the intern from Stanford helped with that project this summer by doing a lot of work with the negative photos. So if you have local history questions, feel free to run up to the library. They've got lots of information and they'd love to help out. Also, the Lewis Town Library is a part of Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, and that's a really great opportunity for local kids to read these books to their home. That's something that the library has done for the past couple of years and has had a lot of success. And a couple of the people from the library will get to go to Bozeman and actually interact with the amazing Dolly Parton, as she will be in Montana to talk about her program, which is amazing.
Wow.
I might jump in the bag, just. Lastly, I do believe they are working on opening the position at the library, so there will be another full-time position opening soon. And I want to also note that the library will be closing for the Chalk Cherry Festival. We've done that for the past couple of years. It is lovely to be open, I can open at the library, but it's also very good to close down that facility, because it does get used pretty extensively for bathrooms. And that is pretty part of old library plumbing. So that will be... The library will be closed Saturday, September 6th, for Chalk Cherry. Our next meeting will be, I believe it is September. I'm gonna make sure I get the right date.
Is it a ten?
September 17th, which is the third Wednesday in September. Again, those are at 1:00 PM in the upstairs of the library. That's library.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Speaker?
Nothing to report.
Awesome. Nothing from the Central Montana Foundation? And the Park and Rec Board will be Wednesday, September 3rd. Am I right on that?
Yes.
We've been off a little bit for summer, so...
Go out with the parks, right? You've been out of the parks, recreating.
Out in the parks. All right, one more city manager report?
Yes. The pool is still open for the season. August 24th is the last day. Hours are modified, and so I recommend people checking the Park and Rec's Facebook page or the pool's Facebook page for up-to-date hours on that. Then we will work to get the facility winterized and do some larger maintenance projects yet this fall. The Downtown Association will be hosting their Hot Summer Days event this upcoming Saturday. There is a ton of activities all day long throughout the downtown, and so check out their Facebook page for specifics on that. The weather has allowed public works to spend out there, both painting crosswalks and curbs all across town and also working on bleating and trimming and other activities. I briefly touched on that the water project is rapidly coming to an end. Brassing has been paved, there is still some paving to do, but the majority of that has been done. And then, we continue to work with closing out and some other questions and upgrades to the SCADA system and the previous project. Play Football, that program is currently underway, and we are gearing up for the Fall Soccer Program. Again, registration can be done online for those parks programs. And then, just briefly, the storms. We have had some issues at the wastewater plant with equipment going down. We were able to quickly get that repaired in our back, but the weather has definitely been playing into some delays on our projects. It's too wet to install the strip flow system in some of the city hall, things like that. So we do love the rain, but it definitely has some推迟 schedules.
Is it just because it's so wet?
It'll make them want, they can't trench through that.
I was gonna ask, too, you mentioned the pool is still open through this week, but what was the article that I read about, like, the volunteer staff? They all have certified as volunteers?
Certified, I think about five volunteers that helped extend it. Much of our staff has already gone back to college or school or is in sports.
So are they working now, or are they the ones that are carrying through with this week?
In addition to some of our staff.
God.
It's a combination.
I think that... How did that work? Is that a good thing? I mean, it seems like it was, we got...
We haven't got a ton of feedback. I know, you know, on busy days, there were volunteers that could help cover during busy hours, things like that. So it's just a great way that we could extend coverage in our opening hours a little bit later into the season.
I'd like to extend a great thanks to those that are volunteering their time. I think that is a great opportunity for our community to use such a wonderful resource longer. It's also creative management, we're in the front of that, and it's nice to see the pool continue to be open, especially when they always, always have these very warm days, generally right around when it closes. So this is, it's good to see, and I hope it works really well for the community as well as those volunteers.
We could extend it, you know, school will start next week for many of the kids, and then, we were able to kind of extend it through the week and into that following weekend. But we won't be purchasing additional chlorine, so we had enough supplies to last us.
Yeah, how that, how that works, get the alterations of keeping it open.
Yes.
I know it's payroll difference, there's still a lot of cost. So will we have more feedback on that in the Park and Rec Board meeting?
Correct. And our managers will be preparing the end-of-year reports for us, where hopefully they'll have kind of a deeper vision to that.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, so that is it for the board and commission reports and the city manager report. Any public comment? Can we have a public comment on non-agenda items? All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Acknowledging claims that have been paid from August 1st to the 15th of this year. Do the commission have any questions on any of the claims that were poured to the page?
I have none. Energy, I can't... 57, 564 on page two. Energy Laboratories, is that... That, that's a good thing that we're doing?
We do send weekly samples to energy labs.
Spectacular, lovely to see them on there. And then, we, I'm guessing that's a part of our reporting that then goes in to report for DEQ and those kinds of things?
It's reported monthly to, through our DMRs.
Love to do that.
Any other questions from the commission? Is there a motion?
We... Approve and... To consent a agenda.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Rube and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda? If you all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, consent agenda is gonna approve, we'll move on to our regular agenda with item number one, discussion and action on sponsoring a CDVG application for Homeward. City Manager Holley Phelps.
Yep, so put it in your packet, there's a little information that Homeward provided. The members of Homeward are also online. Both Julie and Erin are online as well. But you can kind of see the summary of what they're doing. Again, they are looking to see if we are interested in sponsoring their grant application. All of us are familiar with Ulet Place and recognize that it is low to moderate income housing for our community. And, you know, kind of summarizes the need and the plan for the project that they hope to get some CDVG funding for. Erin or Julie, if you'd like, you are welcome to jump in and add to that if you'd like.
Is Snow Mountain informed?
Well, I would, I would like to, this is Julie Steidler with Homeward. I'm a project manager there, and then asset, Erin, my partnering crime on this call or on this meeting is the asset manager. And I'd just like to point out that Homeward will do all the work of making the application. It's due September 17th. We'll do everything, but as a CHODO, even though we're a CHODO, we can't apply directly. So it's like when Ulet Place was originally built, the city applied for the home grant that helped build that property, and then LCDC and ultimately, Ulet Place were subrecipients. So we would take...
Sorry. You will do all of the administration and pay for things, all of assets?
We'll take care of all the compliance, all the reporting, all the monitoring, all those things that are required with CDVG housing grants.
What is the total cost of the grant you're going for?
The max award limit is $750,000, but we're, we're not gonna be pursuing that full amount. We're really trying to only apply for what is really needed to address some of the water, you know, water issues, and then maybe some appliances, and then some other capital needs. But we're really only seeking, you know, just enough funds to do that. And so, we haven't gotten full estimates yet, so we're still in kind of the discovery on that.
And so, if we do, okay, the sponsorship of this, then they can prepare that, and we will go into, we have to hold two public hearings, one for our basic needs, because I don't think we did it this spring, and then one specific to this project, that can happen at the same meeting.
Would that have to be done before the application was in?
Correct.
So the city won't, would not be responsible for planning any of the project? And there's gonna be no match, that we'll have to do more?
We don't have to provide the match. The money would go through the city, though.
Yeah, we would be like...
Still be writing checks. We'd still be, you know, we'd have to bring back a budget amendment for you to approve, to put the money in the budget, if they get awarded it, that kind of stuff.
We're simply the flow through.
And with these grants, they have to have a government entity with the grants?
Will we need to have someone at the city office kind of look it over, probably?
So before they actually submitted it, I think it would be good to get the actual application, the full package and stuff like that, yes.
Is there open on a crunch page?
Right, yeah. So to approve or disapprove anything tonight is just that we will, like, enter into partnership with them? Correct. There's no, like, actual contract or grant that's secured? It's just they need to show that they have a sponsor, a sponsor.
And I visited with Erin O'Jaw today, and I thought that building was a lot older, but I guess it's only 16 years old, it looks like it's 30. I'm not sure who originally built that, but they didn't use very good material, I'll tell you.
And in this letter, it says it's home to 57 residents here.
Probably not a front.
Seems like a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot of people there, it's a good deal.
I move we approve sponsoring the CDVG application for Homeward.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bueller and a second from Commissioner Rube. Is there any other questions from the commission? Any questions from the public?
Okay, yeah, Richard Bassett, who, who is the holder of the call? Is it like, how many wanted to what?
Primarily, he's asking about what Homeward does. Could you guys, just maybe give him a little synopsis?
Yes, Homeward is a statewide developer, nonprofit developer of homes that people can afford to lease or buy that are targeted to people with lower incomes. We also provide housing counseling and first-time homebuyer counseling and financial skill-building classes. We have properties right now in 14 communities across Montana comprising about 1,605 homes. We have two properties in Lewis Town, Crowley Flats, which is downtown, and then Ulet Place, which is out by Fountain Terrace condominiums, as y'all know. And on Ulet Place, Lewis Town Community Development Corporation is also a partner, co-developer and co-general partner on that property, on that project.
Okay, is this quite the, not CHODO, I don't know. We're talking about, so the community of CHODO County, which one?
I didn't quite catch that.
Is it CHODO, Montana, or...
The county? Or the city or the county of CHODO, Montana, is his question?
Um, no, I'm sorry, I just get used to speaking in acronyms. CHODO is an acronym that is C-H-D-O, and people just call it CHODO, and it stands for Community Housing Development Organization. And it's a HUD qualification or certification. And in Montana, you have to get it in the county where you're actually doing work, and it makes you eligible for different kinds of funding than the regular, just anybody.
The CHODO, not CHODO, okay, probably not.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve sponsoring the CDV app, CBV... CDVG application for Homeward. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Item number two is discussion and action on approving the 2025-2026 annual plan for the Tax Increment Finance District. City Manager Holley Phelps.
So at this morning, TIP, TED meetings, they approved these budgets. And so, first is the Tax Increment Financing District, or the TIP District. You can see the estimated revenues and kind of how they would like to spend those funds. They work primarily in those percentages, and that's what the board would like to see this next year. Again, management and other operating expenses, private investment, infrastructure, discretionary investment opportunities, and then they do have some reserves. But you can see their work plan is much the same as the past. They continue to prioritize private and public investment to generate tax value. These projects are include but not limited to building façades, infrastructure and other public benefits, such as parking, upper-story living or housing units. And then, the board is also working to expand their knowledge of the revolving loan fund. You may recall we saw an application that did move forward this last year, and bonding opportunities for larger projects in the future. And their investment plan and application are used to determine eligibility for each of the projects, and Snow Mountain would continue to administer that. So that is what they are proposing this year. And that has been incorporated into the budget we went over at the committee at the Hall.
Again, these are entities that kind of run on their own and kind of utilize the city. Do they use accounting services? And we will reapprove the 2025-2026 annual plan for the TIP District.
Again, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker, a second from Commissioner Bueller. Are there any other questions regarding the annual plan for the TIP?
So when, when was the TIP started, 2015?
2015 was the base year on that. 15.
2016, okay. And how long was that to run?
I believe it's a 15-year district, but bonding could extend it.
So it's probably gonna go up 2030?
Guaranteed to go up 2030.
Guaranteed, 2030. And it's, it's the tax, tax revenue, it's going up by close to half a million a year here in the last couple of years.
With all of the work that's been going on within the district, yes. They finally got up to where they're getting a decent amount of increment each year.
Then how much, how much was, I don't know, we've, we've approved... Snow Mountain Development Council, they get some operating money, like, this says $19,000. But how much was, did we actually give out in $20,000 grants last year, I should get correct?
Oh, gosh.
I know, it's been a different spreadsheet. They probably did, they're 10, I believe? Yeah, probably about 10 grants this last year. But they do have their revolving loan, and they tried to loan almost $200,000 as well. So we've already appropriated basically that $250,000 of a loan.
Is that when we were gonna do the, was it being a request from the hallway?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make sure the TIP board has approved this work plan. Perfect. Where does the loan show up in there? It's been...
So it's incorporated in those other, it could be infrastructure or private investment, either one. It just depends on the type of work that they...
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the commission or the public?
So, would it be possible, I mean, well, maybe two years ago, we had a list of... It was a really nice list of who all was getting these grants.
I have, I keep a running list of...
Okay, could we have, could we have that at our next meeting, please?
Because some of them have been like ours, for example. Well, it's been a platform approved, but we haven't completed on it, so we haven't requested funds for them.
Correct.
So there's a lot of projects that are outstanding.
So open, and they have a process, you know, there's ones that were very early on that after years of not getting action, they work, they'll send out letters and things like that. But I do keep a separate spreadsheet for myself that keeps it running.
They said that, like, they usually give one-year petition, and then if not, you can ask for an extension.
Correct.
A lot of that, if it's like weather dependent, which mostly will all be...
Yeah. Can you get the supplies to do what you wanna do?
And the contractor, and...
So would you have something like that available? For the next meeting, I'd like that, I'd like it.
We can email it out, too.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions from the commission or the public, we'll do a roll call vote.
We have a motion to approve the 25-26 annual plan for the Tax Increment Finance District. Commissioner Bueller?
Aye.
Commissioner Day?
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rube?
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker?
Aye.
Okay, item number three is discussion and action on approving the 2025-2026 annual plan for the Targeted Economic Development District, otherwise known as the TED. City Manager Holley Phelps.
Yep, so the TED District is the area, basically, from the hospital west to the grocery store. And so, that is a newer district. It was amended, it was created in 2017 and then amended in 2019 to include the grocery store area. And so, over the last several years, that increment has been growing. They just did their first project in the TED, and so that's been a long time in the making. TED are traditionally more focused on infrastructure and infrastructure deficiency. So you see that the majority of their funding goes to infrastructure investments. But they do, we do utilize the same board for both the TIP and TED, and so that, Snow Mountain also administers that, and for what we previously have paid $7,500, it's kind of split between the two. And so, you can see their percentages, again, that is the current revenue projections, estimates, as well as the expenditures that were approved at today's TED meeting. They do focus on prioritizing public and private investment, and their projects include infrastructure, but are not limited to. And they also utilize their application process to determine eligibility.
When it talks about infrastructure with that, that's not sewer and water?
It's not just sewer and water, it could be survey work, it could be, it's primarily, you wanna have that public component, so maybe not necessarily 100% of parking lot, but it could be a paved road or improvements. Could be cable line. Cable, rail, there's a lot of different infrastructures, gas, you know, seismic gas mains or something like that as well.
Invitation for motion?
I move we approve the 25-26 annual plan for the Targeted Economic Development District.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Bueller and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Any other questions regarding the motion? Any other questions regarding the motion?
Just to confirm again. No, they didn't. Did TED board approve this annual work plan? Perfect.
Any comments from the public? Questions? Okay, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the 25-26 annual plan for the Targeted Economic Development District. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item number four is a public hearing to hear comments on resolution number 4197, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2026 work plan and budget for Tourism Business Improvement District. So public hearing is now started to hear comments on that.
Who's all, what is the district?
Uh, the TIP district is our hoteliers. Um, so they now charge two-dollar assessments and utilizing that funding. Um, you can see the revenue projections. Um, they do a multitude of things from sponsoring or, um, paying in parks for events. Uh, they do a ton of activities, uh, such as marketing, uh, the banners on Main Street, the billboard on eighty-seven, uh, ton of print or digital advertising. They pay, um, for Enjoy Louis Towns. Um, they do a ton of things. They do have some discretionary funds which they've lumped onto other opportunities. And then their administrative operations, the city administers that. And so we only include, uh, their insurance in that admin.
Does it help that, to know, when I, what I, I'll pay some of the, uh, like, pay me and that, that thing, or what?
Nope, it pays, they do, uh, sponsorships of different conventions or activities in our community. So maybe it's a hockey tournament or cowboy poetry. Um, but they also do a ton of marketing. They're working with, uh, PR, a public relations firm, to update imagery and provide, um, some blogs or blogs on tourism and tourism activities in our community and things like that.
What's the way?
Uh, they traditionally have not sponsored a parade, but if they got an application, they'd consider it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any other comments for the public hearing?
It's a great, great program to promote tourism. Couple people come into town, really cool people, uh, that like to leave their money here. It's just a good deal.
And come back.
And go back.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And now have discussion and action on approving resolution number 4197, a resolution approving the fiscal year 2026 work plan and budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District Number One, City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, so this work plan was approved by the TIP board, which is made up of the hoteliers. And, um, they continued their marketing and sponsorship activities. Again, they love to see more and more activities in Louis Towne and welcome applications. So it's a great opportunity, uh, for some local groups to grow their activities or, uh, new activities to come to town.
I move this Louis Towne City Commission to approve resolution number 4197, approving the fiscal year 2026 work plan and budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District Number One.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Rube and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Are there any other questions regarding the motion? Anything from the public?
Who, is there a chairperson of that?
Um, so Suzanne Wiggington, which is the, uh, member from the OGO. And Kellyanne is the vice chair for that.
Okay, if there's no questions from the commission or the public, we're going to have a roll call vote.
We are approving resolution number 4197. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker.
Aye.
And so as a sidebar, um, both the TIP application and the TIP applications can be found on our website, too.
Okay, item number six, discussion and action on approving resolution number 4198, a resolution approving an assessment to differentiate the cost of the work plan and the budget for the Tourism Business Improvement District Number One for fiscal year 2025, City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so, uh, resolution forty-one, that eighty-nine is the assessment. Uh, previously, it was a dollar assessment per occupied room night. Uh, in January of this year, we did move to change that to the two dollars. Uh, that is what the board would like to continue, and that's what the budget was prepared to show.
Moving to resolution forty-one ninety-eight. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Speaker and a second from Commissioner Bueller to approve 4198. Any other questions regarding the cost of the, or?
So we had discussion earlier on these verbal places, these, uh, but as I read this, they have to have six rooms before they have to contribute?
Uh, so the way this Tourism Business Improvement District, it was amended to allow for, uh, hotels that had more than six rooms to be part of. There were some other ones that opted out, and those were the smaller hotels. Uh, the RBOs or Airbnbs, those sort of things, uh, are required to pay the state, you know, bed tax, but not necessarily to participate in our TIP. Could they if they wanted to?
I think state law would have to change.
Okay. And definitely our resolution is.
Law and that.
Cause right now, everyone that could be participating is not, cause we have that change of ownership.
Yep.
Well, there are, there's, there's getting to be quite a few of them in Louis Towne.
There's a ton of Airbnb.
And they're, and I've, I've used them, they're nice, but I think they need to help contribute. So let's think about that.
Um, so it's kind of a.
It's a commission, you don't need to say all of that.
No. Um, it's kind of another sidebar, and it's kind of about budget and stuff like that. A lot of the tax reform will work to address that. Um, so the taxing rates, I'm sure we've all heard it today, uh, with the last legislative changes, uh, tax rates on your primary homes are going down, uh, secondary homes or Airbnbs are not. Um, and so there is some legislative changes that will give property owners that are using homes as primarily their primary residence and not second homes or, or rental properties and things like that. So benefits, breaks. But yes, it's something that definitely the Department of Revenue and many other groups are working on.
Right. But isn't it one thing?
Am I, am I right on saying that? I didn't think, we don't have any, as a commission, not any, we can't set any boundaries on that or collect anything.
The only thing could be done is if you wanted to put it as an actual item in the business license. Where you require Airbnb to be licensed. Now, right now, if people call in, yes, we have them get one as a property manager.
Don't they, don't they have to do that with their Airbnb company, though? So, no. Interesting.
Well, some are handled through the website, through the booking site. Some people do it on their own, some people, it's all word of mouth. I mean, you have a plethora of different situations just across there.
They basically are running a business in the city, but they pay, they don't have a business license.
Not necessarily, not all of them. Some of them do.
Some of them do, some of them choose to, but it's not required.
Mostly, I, I mean, I don't actively go after them. Now, if somebody turns them in, yes, I do. Or if they call and ask if they need one, yes, they need one.
Interesting, okay.
Is that some, is that something we should think about solidifying in the future? Could you bring that to a committee at the hall with a presentation?
What was that you said?
Uh, bring that topic as a committee at the hall, discussion topic?
Having the Airbnb's, having part of the city ordinance that they're required to get, uh, to have a license.
Interesting.
Discussions, pros and cons.
But then it's one thing.
Well, we just have the one district.
Okay.
It's the one and only.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the commission or the public? Let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, we are approving resolution number 4198. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker.
Aye.
All right, moving on, we are now having a public hearing, taking your comments on resolution number 4199, a resolution amending the 2024-2025 budget of the City of Louis Towne. So now we're open.
Um, so this budget amendment, uh, works to clean up the previous budget years. Um, there was a, a handful of things that were unanticipated, either grants or other revenues, um, as well as expenditures that came along, um, during the course of the fiscal year. And so this kind of cleans those up. The first one is section one, that is the library. And, uh, we did unfortunately have the passing of a longtime employee. And, uh, that was her buyout, um, or a portion of the buyout. Um, again, there was vacancy savings that helped with the expense, but it was not budgeted for. And so you'll see, um, the expense and the revenue there. Section two is within the Parks Department. There was a lot of projects that were, um, funded. Um, two of them in the Parks Department were, uh, the Pull-Up and Dip, Dip Bar. That was a grant, um, and an Eagle Scout project by one of our local Eagle Scouts. And the Expression Swing was a swing that was, uh, funded through the Central Montana Foundation and an individual applied for it. And it was, uh, the face-to-face swing that's down at Front Day Park. Um, those, again, were funded through donations, but not anticipated expense or revenues. And then the second paragraph is the stuff that the Friends of the Pool graciously donated for. And that includes the tarps, the casters, and the vacuum. Um, again, they are paying for it, but it was not anticipated. So you'll see all of that under section two. Section three is the Friends of the Trails. Again, we knew the paving, um, project was in there, had the grant. Uh, the Friends of the Trails committed the match of nine thousand. Uh, we did account for it in the revenue side, but did not put that in the expenditure side. That's a hundred percent of the expenditure in there. And then they also funded an additional project on the trail system, or a portion of an additional project that was providing, uh, city water to the Turner Center on Brewery Flats. Um, and so that was an additional seventy-five hundred dollars. And then they partnered with the Trails Department, uh, for a new mower. And so those expenses were not anticipated the last time we passed the budget. And so you'll see the revenue and expenses for those. Section four is the School Resource Officer, and cleaning those up again, kind of mid-year. Um, the individual that is our, uh, SRO officer was promoted. And he also added a dependent to the health insurance. And in the police bargaining agreement, uh, we contributed an additional two hundred dollars a month for family coverage. And so that is the health insurance portion there. Uh, section five is an expenditure you guys all are aware of. The fire department, uh, recently purchased a side-by-side. And so they do regularly receive donations. Uh, traditionally, those donations have, uh, sat there until there's an expenditure. Uh, this time, they elected to move forward with purchasing that side-by-side. And they were able to get some additional donations to move forward with that purchase. And so you'll see the donation increase of two thousand dollars, and then the total expenditure, um, as well. Uh, section six is the Barca. Uh, so just consolidating the Barca funds into our gas tax account. So just moving those funds. Section seven is cleanup for Riverdale. And so it was incorrectly budgeted in the past, um, due to rounding errors in the software. And so, uh, we added a dollar sixty-one to the principal amount in Riverdale. And section eight is the water project and all of the grants that were utilized for that. Any questions there?
The funding that was received far for the.
Yeah, section eight, she didn't, yeah, we did not type that up very much, very well. So the funding that was received, um, exceeded what I budgeted, which is the seven hundred and four thousand six hundred and seventy-five and the four hundred thousand ARPA and the revenue bond. And then I also needed to, uh, account for the project half, the construction half that was not budgeted for. So the wording's not real good there.
So, okay. Is that a good thing, what, it, it progressed quicker than anticipated? Does that mean it didn't cost us as much?
No, it went faster than we thought. We weren't expecting some of these expenses till this fiscal year.
Until later, yeah.
Yeah. That's good, there wasn't weather delays.
Any other questions, commission, public? We will close the public hearing. And now move on to agenda item number eight, which is discussion and action on approving resolution 4199, the resolution amending the 2024-2025 budget of the City of Louis Towne, City Manager Holly Phelps.
Yep, um, so this budget amendment takes into consideration those eight sections that were previously discussed. Again, by doing that, we're cleaning up, uh, last year's budget and will have a compliant balanced budget. Does this, is there anything else that may come through, or is this kind of year end? Um, so the auditors will come in and close out our year. Um, that is scheduled for kind of the end of September. Um, so I won't say that this is absolutely a hundred percent the end.
But this is as close as we're gonna get. This is what we're going to need in order for me to complete this next year's budget.
And auditors are coming in at the end of September?
For year end. And the audit audit isn't scheduled until February, January, December.
So then we get to review that, like, March, when it might happen?
I move the Louis Towne City Commission passes, amending the 2024-2025 budget of the City of Louis Towne, resolution 4199.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Rube and a second from Commissioner Hewitt. Any other questions from the commission?
Just curiosity, when do we have to amend? Is it just to overextend?
The fund is overextended.
Fund is over, okay.
Or we know that, you know, if we were to get the CDBG and let's say as part of, you know, the public hearings, and then we, when we have to do the acceptance, we could include it at that point, too. We just always have to do a public hearing.
Any other comments or questions from the public?
Yeah, does it, does it mean as the, what is it, bill to level the 2025 thing? Does it mean it's a bill to the twenty twenty-five, then it's a pay-in, unexpected bill? Did I understand it?
No.
Is it unexpected?
Yeah, both.
Just the amount?
The amount.
Overextended.
Or we.
New projects.
New projects, grants, promotions.
Because some of those things were funded, just we weren't expecting them to be done, those projects?
Or maybe not awarded anymore, yeah.
And we didn't know, when we did the budget, they didn't plan on giving us money for tarps, all that. We went through the purchasing policies. We didn't expect to lose a long-term employee. Those are all things we can't control.
Yeah, I'm going to build that.
All right, if there's more other questions or comments, we'll go for a roll call vote.
Okay, we are passing Resolution number four one nine nine. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker.
Aye.
Okay, item number nine, discussion and action on approving Resolution four two zero zero, a resolution relating to adopting a preliminary budget and providing a date for a public hearing and adoption thereof for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, ending July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Milestone, City Manager Holly Phelps.
So this resolution really just sets forward our schedule to pass, to hold a public hearing and pass our final budget at the next meeting, which is September second.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Uh, yeah, okay, yeah.
So those items listed there, we've done our preliminary, like everything, we're meeting all these requirements that you've got listed?
By passing this, we are.
Okay.
Or by passing this, you're saying we have a preliminary budget, and it's prepared? You're telling me that we're going to hold a public hearing, so then I can set my date for the September second? And then, and that's what number three says, too. Notice of the public to the prep, of its preparation and set the date.
If any citizens can come in and take a look and view the what. I'll entertain a motion. I'll believe that we, um, yeah, Resolution forty twenty, forty twenty.
Forty twenty, forty-two hundred?
Forty-two hundred. Forty-two, well, I'm, yeah, I'm looking.
Yeah.
Forty-two hundred. Can we make a motion? Do we have a second?
Sir.
Can we make a motion from Commissioner Hewitt and a second from Commissioner Rube to approve Resolution four two zero zero? Any other questions regarding our preliminary budget for the public hearing?
Just to confirm, minute the next meeting, when it is presented, we'll have the cash carry forward in the reserves. We will have the one-year minimum budget. We don't plan on going over the full budget, so come with questions? And you'll be excited to see, don't you?
And remember that it's a, there's nine, ten items to approve our budget.
Yep.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay, we are approving Resolution number four two zero zero. Commissioner Bueller.
Aye.
Commissioner Day.
Aye.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Aye.
Commissioner Rube.
Aye.
Commissioner Speaker.
Aye.
Woohoo, woohoo. All right, citizens request, maybe our citizens request tonight. All right, we'll start with our commissioners' minute. We'll start with Commissioner Speaker.
Can't think of anything. I got minutes.
You got minutes?
I got a minute. I do want to express my thanks again to the volunteer lifeguards, I think that's a pretty unique opportunity, great seat. I'd like the commission to think about and maybe decide on a process on how we can respond to group emails when a citizen sends us a group email, and how we can respond to that in a more timely fashion. I know I always start to think, who is this, do I respond to this? Do I need to bump this to Holly? Do we need the commission chair to respond? But I do think it's really important in our communications with people that we do respond, and we do respond in a timely manner. Especially, we've gotten a couple lately, and it's good to make sure we're looping back to them quickly. So think on that, maybe we can have a time to discuss how that process with the commission could work.
I think that's smart, because I know there's two big issues that were kind of outstanding with that. One was the dog bite incident, but that was kind of a protected case, legally.
Exactly.
So, as much as we all wanted to let respond to that, like that was under confidentiality.
But I also think responding with that as our goal is very important. Again, you can't answer everything, and it's not necessarily our job to, but it is our job to make sure that the public knows that we are aware and that processes are moving forward, and that maybe we can't disclose anything at this time.
Because now you have the free-range cats.
Well, and sometimes I am looked out, and like sometimes I'm included in those emails, but more often than not, I'm not really aware until one of you makes me aware.
So what is kind of a phone call or edit, because Tim is really great to jump on and respond to a lot of those group commission emails, but what, like what would you?
I would suggest maybe the chair or whoever the designated says, "Thanks for reaching out. I'm going to have to do some research, and we'll get back to you," you know, just acknowledge receipt of it, and then we can have a conversation, or we can loop in, you know, the various departments or something.
Or is it?
But it's going to take a little time.
Say it'll be at this meeting, keeping that communication. I was thinking having the chair do that, or a person, a representative from the ward, but then it's real.
Give the vice chair.
That's not the chance. So kind of think on that, and maybe we can come to a decision as a.
But that way you know who's doing it and not assuming that somebody else is.
Because that's where I get very, I like to respond very quickly to things, but I don't know if that's how we all want to do that, and maybe streamlining that process. So we have one clear voice for when there's one less gauge.
I think it's smart, because that's one of the topics that kind of addressed that.
Yep.
Last one. So can we just say, now, I'll respond to all those group emails, and then we'll bring those issues forward in our commissioner minute? And then also, like, kind of a double backup is to say, like, if everybody can look at bringing that, it's kind of a minute. I'm saying, for example, tonight, where are we at with ten range cats? And I'll be, for instance, with us and things like that.
All right, so in that, you will respond to them and copy me into it? That way we know that we're all on the same.
Yep, okay. Keep everybody in more communication. Thank you to the city for painting the crosswalks by our schools, schools starting again, and it's great to see that we have good road markings for both the drivers and the students coming into schools. I know that Lewis and Clark is a very busy place, and all of the schools are in the morning, so it's great to see that identified and ready for the school year. It's really nice. Lastly, I was, I went to the Big Spring Watershed Council barbecue picnic on Saturday. It was delightful, but in doing so, I walked around Hatchery and noticed that Hatchery grounds is something that may need us to look at and think about creatively on how to maintain, because if I'm correct, is that a city park?
It's a park, but it's leased by FWP, so there is a committee that has met on how, what the future looks like, how to fund improvement, things like that.
Could they, could that committee come and present to the city commission, and they have findings and information that they'd like to share with us?
Yep, I think that that was kind of the end result. I don't know where we got. Again, there are some things that are funded through FWP that Miles was going to try and keep moving along.
Navigating.
And then some long-term projects, so yes, we need to loop back.
So city park that is leased by Bishop Mall?
A portion of it is because they have it as part of their operations. And then the parking area and the picnic area is a traditional city park.
And a lot of that is just cleaned up from that construction that they did?
No, just more of the actual spring. Yeah, so some water damage, you know, eroding the stacked block wall.
The cement hatching is not.
Bridges.
Talked about that being like a historic.
Yep, that was some of the fundings that they were looking at.
Because when was their last, what their Lewis Town project, were you thinking?
They do individual projects, you know, supporting businesses or funding businesses or things like that, but not necessarily a community project.
Brewer Flats, because that'd be kind of cool, if all the way to the city pageant. Am I thinking of that right? Like seeing more of the city rather than the community.
To know, or we could ask that they come and do a presentation on local projects and how we're investing in our community or something like that.
But along with that, the Hatchery options, sometimes now might, because of the deteriorating state of especially the wall, it might be interesting to think about how to do more long-term fix out there. So if you're in direct communication with that committee, let them know that it'd be interesting to hear lots of different options on how that space may be revitalized and revamped.
Because is this kind of the first, like, it's been under all that construction, is this kind of the first that it's, or no?
So when you go to the Hatchery, you have the great water project that happened with the city, kind of the middle area, but then when you walk along the actual park area, that's where the spring bubbled up. And back in the forties, the Conservation Corps came in and built structures around that whole area to create kind of a pond, but now all of the rock broken structures are falling into that pond, as well as the bridges themselves are eroding. You can see rebar instead of where cement should be. So there is infrastructure options that need to be addressed out there. It is, it's showing its age, and it's a great time to think creatively about how that part.